Okay, I'd like to call the POC County Board Meeting to order tonight for September the 18th, 2020. We will open up with a word of prayer for our board member, Mr. Bette Beager. Ms. Prater.
Ms. Prater, Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight, Lord, and we're so thankful for the way that you bless us. And, Lord, just watch over this school district. And we're so thankful for the administrators, the faculty. And, Lord, we ask you to watch over our students, and if there's a special need among any of those, to let us recognize that as the ones that can see that. And, Lord, just thank you for all you do, in Jesus' name.
Thank you, Mr. Beager. Go down to our call of order with the student achievement. Mr. Green?
Yes, first off tonight, I want to thank Mr. Jones and his hospitality alone, and the staff at Sopice Council, members and staff members here tonight. Of course, this is our opening night, our first televised board meeting with Pike TV, so we want to welcome Mr. Al Greenfield and Pike TV and all of our viewers. The principals are accustomed to being filmed, Mr. Jones and Mr. Rowe, with the popular principals forum show, where we, every two weeks, we try to update those in the community and all of our stakeholders regarding the activities and what's going on within our school district. And again, I want to begin tonight by saying thank you for the hospitality and that wonderful dinner, also the performance of the elementary school students. And to Ms. Prater, a special thank you for she and her students with the Panther News Hour and some of the great work that they're producing, of course, that's aired on Pike TV. Also have some people to recognize here tonight. Of course, we have some special guests here tonight. Mr. Jones, would you like to begin?
We had, I actually had some plans, there's a couple of things that we wanted to mention about our new math series and also with our, some social studies things we're doing curriculum-wise. Asked permission to hold that off to next month, so our teachers wanted to discuss that, but they saw the opportunity to leave, and I'll bring them, so they'll, I'll bring them next month and have them talk about that. If you want me to go ahead and go down through my list, I'll do that now, that way we can, we completed a real successful first family night last night, science, technology, and math night here at PES. I didn't actually get the numbers today, but we had a large crowd. It was a huge crowd, we really appreciate that. And Mr. Green mentioned earlier, our grandparents' day, huge success, you know, close to 500 visitors. We are going to have to expand that now to a two-day event, just like our other Thanksgiving. And one special thing that we want to start the year off this year, we've had some discussions over the past couple of years, that we really feel like we are sending, and I'm sure Mr. Rowe will agree, pretty good students to the junior high. But we feel like we're sending students who are prepared academically, but we also want to make sure we acknowledge the fact that we think we're sending students who are well-mannered and well-behaved. And we feel like some of the things that we start early here works. We want to start the year off by recognizing students for exceptional behavior. We've had a program for the past little bit where our teachers award out-of-the-ordinary behaviors, such as just a crude example, student drops their books, if a teacher sees another student stop, help them pick them up, just things like that. They award a student a coin, that a student brings the coin, places it in the office, and we had a goal, once our box reached a certain height of coins, that we would have a school-wide reward. Well, Thursday is that day. They met the goal earlier this year, and we've got some inflatables coming in, and every student's going to have a snack, a treat, and they'll have some extra time to play on those inflatables. And it's just a way to reward them and to thank them for it. We expect the normal behavior, but out-of-the-ordinary behavior is what we are proud of, and we want to make sure they understand that's why they're getting that. So that's coming on this week. We have a homecoming float. Our, I ask you to look through that door before you go home tonight, you will see it sitting inside on the stage here. The students are actually working in our class, putting it together for the parade on Friday. Have the opportunity to, you know, to have Ms. Kentucky here tomorrow. She's going to be here visiting our school tomorrow. I know Mr. Ruffett, she's with, at the high school coming up soon as well, so we're proud of that, and we're proud to have that opportunity. We are proud of our new lunchroom tables, we hope you enjoy eating on them. One last thing I want to mention, we had perfect attendance, or not, high attendance day-to-day, and we had about 97 percent attendance, which is high, but that's about average for us. We have pretty good attendance every day. Like you said, about the same at the high school. But we have great attendance in this district. It's unbelievable attendance. We have great, any parents in parental support. But one thing we're going to do tomorrow that our, actually our PTO came up with the idea, every student who was here today, all day, is going to be entered into a drawing. And we're going to draw tomorrow, new names from each grade level, and those students will have the opportunity to ride that float Friday in the parade. So that's kind of an incentive for them of being here today. We're going to have that drawing in the morning and make a big deal out of that. You know, again, we had a couple of things to talk about, about our math series and social studies, but with your permission, Mr. Green, we'll put that off to next month, and we'll, you know, we'll have those personnel there to talk about that. That's really all I have. We hope you all enjoyed your meal, and we appreciate you coming over here to meet with us.
We want to certainly thank Ms. Kelly and also the young ladies that performed tonight, too. So that was a great dinner show, so.
Absolutely.
We'll move down to the high school report, Mr. Ruffett.
First of all, we've got a special guest here we want to recognize tonight. We have the 2012 Pike County Bowl Queen, Ms. Madison Tackett. I wanted to make sure everybody could get a chance to see her smile once again. We're very proud of her for earning this honor. It's the second consecutive year that Pikeville High School has had the Pike County Bowl Queen, so I'll give a round of applause, Ms. Madison.
If we could, could you take just a second to share the process or the procedure that you went through instead of that just being, it's more than just a beauty contest? So please share the details, and it's kind of a grueling procedure that you went through with that. So could you share with us a little bit?
On the morning of the Pike County Bowl, all of the contestants met. We got to meet each other at a small get-together, and then we went into a luncheon with all of our judges and people from the bank. And we were judged on that, and we were judged on our dress and our poise and how we spoke, but also our academics that played a big part in it. And then after the luncheon, we all got to go meet with the contestants again while we were one by one taken into an interview. And they asked us questions from everything about what my school was like, and what I was doing in my school to make a difference, and what my school did to make a difference in the community, from everything to my family and my grandparents. And I think we talked about my feet some in elementary school. And then after that, we all met again together with all the contestants, and they took us down, and we got to hang out before we walked down the football field to see who won. So it was, it was a long day, but it was a good day.
Okay, thank you, congratulations.
Thank you.
And again, you're following Ms. Molly Bates, who was last year's winner.
Yes, yes.
And just, and I hate to interrupt, Mr. Rowe, but just on the next item, since we're recognizing guests, would you mind to introduce our other guest students?
I'll let them stand up and introduce themselves. Come on.
Okay, this, first of all, these are, these are members of the student council, it's a group that I sponsor. And one thing that I require them to do, I want them to attend a parent advisory committee meeting, a board meeting, and a student council meeting, because I feel like it's important that they know how these groups work, and then hopefully that you will see some things that we do. But they're a good group of kids, we meet once a month. Madison is our president, and we've already done a lot of things. And I spoke with Mr. Green earlier about the possibility at another meeting, having the presidents of the different clubs come and share with you exactly what's going on at Pikeville High School. And these girls and guys, I could all kind of do.
We look forward to hearing more about that at next month's board, regular scheduled board meeting, when we'll be at Pikeville High School. So, Mr. Ruffett?
Yeah, the three sections of things I'm going to cover today. First one's going to be the academic side, then there'll be some information on items, and we'll talk a little bit about homecoming. Just to, I know we shared some of these statistics before, but to make sure that we all understand of what our students are really doing in the building. We have currently 51 percent of our juniors and seniors enrolled in a dual credit class. That's both through U-Pike and through Moritz State University, and that's an outstanding number. We've got 85 students who are taking 196 course offerings in dual credit. And these classes are being taught, for the most part, inside of our building, so when they're taught inside of our building, that is zero cost to our parents and to our students. So I want to commend Mr. Green and the board for allowing us to pursue this avenue, and our students are reaping the rewards for that. On the other side, we have 43 percent of our students at the junior and senior level enrolled in AP courses. That's 124 students taking a total of 297 AP courses. And I will challenge that number with anything in eastern Kentucky, even farther central or western Kentucky. For a school of our size, it's just amazing, the coursework that our students are getting exposed, it's going to really help them when they get to the secondary level. Today, we took the Explore, the Plan, and the Caplin ACT exams. Our district is unique in that we take Explore both in seventh and eighth grade, and we do the Plan both in ninth and 10th grade, and we do the Caplin ACT just for 11th grade. We know that college and career is the focus for the state, and it's the focus for our district. And again, I want to thank the district for providing these extra exams, that we can take the data, and we can break that down, and make informed decisions with our instruction to make sure our students are prepared for post-secondary. Found out today that we're one of 17 school districts in the state of Kentucky that were voted What Parents Want Award. This is the second consecutive year, this is done through school match. After looking at this, we found out that there's only 16 percent of public schools in the United States earn this award, so it's quite an accomplishment for our district. Again, we are fourth in the state when it comes to ACT scores. We know that's something that's very important, when students want to go to college, they have to have ACTs, ACT scores to get the high-paying scholarships, we're very excited about that. We also did have the celebration, and I want to thank, kudos to our stakeholders for bringing the food, helping us celebrate a day outside of our ACT scores. Now, for the informational part, this past weekend was the Paint Pikeville Pink. It was a huge success, the second annual event there. I've spoken with Debbie Freeman today, had over 700 participants in the second annual Paint Pikeville Pink. It all started with Sandra May and Ms. Huffman coming up with an ideal of involving our kids in the community. I think it's very important that we embrace our community and be a part of it, and I want to thank our kids for being a part of that. If you haven't had a chance to review the stakeholder email, our chorus and our band are both doing extremely well, we're very excited about them. Trying to include some pictures and some videos of what's going on. It's just great to see our students so involved. Going to the extracurricular side, if you haven't heard or seen, our boys soccer, our girls soccer, and our girls golf all won the 15th reading and all A tournaments, so it's pretty exciting for our extracurricular activities. We also have Noah Combs, who qualified for the state in boys golf on the boys' side, so very exciting for that. Parents will want to know that ESS tutoring is starting today, that's going to take place most Tuesdays and Thursdays, so any student needs help can stay after school and receive those services. And our district is very kind to provide transportation for our students, so that takes one hurdle out of the way for some kids who sometimes can't stay when we have the transportation provided for them. Homecoming, the Powderpuff Gang, which is a big hit to do with a lot of our females here in attendance, I know, is scheduled for Thursday at 6:30 PM. We invite everybody to come out to, it's amazing the number of fans who come that rival some of our football games on the boys' side, so we're excited about that. We have a pep rally for 2:30 on Friday for homecoming. We have the homecoming parade starting at 4:30. Again, meet at the Hardee's Park lot, like we always do, and the stuff will have everything ready for that, I'm sure. We have the homecoming game for the, this year is going to be actually on a Saturday, it's going to be this new Saturday versus Swing County, North Carolina, it's going to start at 2:00, and we'll crown the queen at halftime. Homecoming dance will at 8:00 PM Saturday evening. One last piece that I'm going to be sending home to the stakeholders in the stakeholder email this week, we will be starting an extracurricular advisory council. This is a chance for our stakeholders to come in and share their thoughts and concerns dealing with anything extracurricular. So we're inviting everybody to come out, stand for this first meeting, it's going to be set for Monday, September the 24th at 5:30, so please come to the comments area, and we look forward to talking to you. That's all I have, do you have any questions?
Thank you. And next month at the high school, well, Pikeville High School will be hosting the board at the next regular scheduled meeting. We'll also have a report for athletic regulars.
Okay, we'll move down to the instructional supervisor report.
Do you want to do a I-N-A check before you go?
After I, after I said my piece, I looked down and realized that the reason you wanted me to talk, I hadn't seen anything. So I apologize. We are required, Mr. Rowe and myself, are required twice a year to give you guys a report as to where we're at on our school approval plans. On the, it'll be projected on the screen. I'll go through this really quick. We meet at the end of the school year, at the end of the last school year, put together a plan for this upcoming year, also the next couple of school years. And I just want to give you an update.
I'm not sure if it's going to be on the screen or not.
Obviously, school's just now starting, we're, you know, about five weeks or so into it. We're not by any means complete, and hopefully the reports you receive in March or April will be, we'll be able to say we've completed a lot of things. I'll go through this rather quickly. We talked about on the academic side, some of the goals that we had. We wanted to test all of our students three times a year in reading and math as benchmark assessments. We have completed the first benchmark for every student in our building in math and in reading. So that is completed. There's another assessment to be given in December, and then one after sometime in the early spring. Based on the RTI model presented, our goal is for students, 80 percent of our students to be proficient in reading and math. We are very near that goal. Every year, we get a little better, that's a good sign, and during the year, we get a little better. We are continuing towards that goal, and it will be achieved this school year, which is great news. Also, I'm required to give benchmark reports to our council, our school council, three times a year, and once those reports are completed, we actually did our first benchmark report tonight. I'll let her get caught up with me now.
While she's doing that, just a couple of things I want to point out and mention that really makes a difference here. We're really fortunate, the elementary school, to have additional programs and, of course, additional staff. Currently, regarding the reading, I'm sure Mr. Jones would share with you that a huge reason for the success is in literacy is reading recovery, has three teachers dedicated solely to early literacy here.
And one instructional assistant.
Right, and one instructional assistant there, that if, if we have an extra penny to fund within this district, it's early literacy, so that, you know, if a, if a student can read, they can pretty much teach themselves. So it's kind of like the, for our stakeholders, the best analogy I can give you is everyone wants in on the ground floor of an investment. Well, this is kind of getting in on the ground floor, and we want to do the same with our students. So that, that's a huge add-on or plus here. Also, something that won't be shown in here is, we're really fortunate to have a foreign-language teacher that's actually certified, Mr. Josh Sloan, and he also works with technology with Mr. Neil Arnett here. And I'm unaware of any school district in eastern Kentucky that has a certified foreign-language teacher within the elementary school, so really fortunate and thankful to have that. And also, within this, and you'll notice the dollar figures, and of course, we've got a working budget tonight, the state minimum is $100 per student, and of course, both schools are allocated $152 for students. So when you, when you see this, and with the SBDM picking up the funds on that, that's the additional monies rotating to the schools there. So just now that we've got that up, want to make sure that everyone's aware of that. Sorry to interrupt you, Mr. Jones.
Oh, that's, if you want to look at AP 1D through AP 1G, that section, we've talked about, we've explained, we went through this with you, you have a pretty good grasp of our RTI program, response to intervention. It's not, it's not a choice, it's a, it's something we have to do, however, it's good teaching. We, we feel like our teachers do a great job in RTI. AP 1D through AP 1G all deals with our, with our RTI program, which means that we benchmark students, we find out students who are in need of additional supports, we meet and find ways to get them those supports. And to make a long story short, AP 1D through AP 1G all deals with that, and we are in the process now of, you know, obviously, we just benchmarked, we're in the process of getting all that going. You know, the parent has a, you know, a voice in that committee, the, the, you know, the students themselves has a voice in the committee that makes a placement decision if applicable, you know, of course, the teachers, administrators, everyone has, has a voice in that decision, in which decisions are made with different intervention strategies for children. It's a great program, and I think we're doing a really good job with it over here. I'd like to thank Ms. Tackett for her assistance over the last couple of years in getting this off the ground, but you know, our teachers have bought in, and it's, it's, it's really successful. AP 2A through about D or E, all talks about our PLCs, our professional learning communities, which is another, one of our big ideas. We want to make sure that our teachers have time to meet together, to plan collaboratively, not only together with their grade-level peers, but also in vertical teams of math teachers, for instance, or reading teachers. So, you know, we are still continuing to provide time, as well as they are spending some time after school meeting in their professional learning communities. Some of the ideas, if you go on down through there, some of the ideas that comes from those professional learning communities are the use of formative and summative assessments, you know, how they affect instruction, ways to improve instruction based on the assessments that we are giving children. AP 2F says that administrators will sit in on those meetings. We do our very best to get all of them. It's, it's hard to get them all, but we try, and I think that's always going to be ongoing. We're doing our very best to sit in with teachers every time they meet, because they're spread out different times, and, and we try our best to do that. AP 2G through AP 3A and 3B, we talk about teacher learning targets. You can, you, we ask you to please come into our classrooms, we have teachers who have posted clear learning targets in student-friendly language that, and to make a long story short about a learning target, you walk into a classroom, you can see on the board or in, in some kind of place that you will know, as well as the students, and the teacher knows what's being covered that day. And, you know, that's, you know, the layman's way to put it. It's just a basic statement, I can, you do this today. And, you know, it's posted in our, in our school, high school, I know does the same thing. You know, technology, you know, I have some good graphs, I wish I would have brought those, I'm, you know, I think we're going to share those at future meetings. You know, our walkthrough observations, Mr. Belcher, Ms. Tackett, Mr. Stone, myself, I know Mr. Rowe's staff doing the same. Our walkthrough observations, we're seeing good use of technology throughout our building. We are also seeing some talking points, you know, some things that we can improve on, but it is being used, and we can prove it with pictures now. We, AP 4A, our math books, we, you know, it's, you know, we're using them. I had some teachers plan to talk to you guys tonight about our new math series, we'll bring those to the next board meeting, and, you know, I want them to explain to you the good things that are going on with our new math series, and how much we appreciate the opportunity to buy those books. You know, the next few things, we're talking about ILPs, individual learning profiles, that individual learning plans, students, our sixth graders complete here, moving on into junior high, as kind of a way to track their interests. Our teachers will be trained on that here yearly, and all sixth graders will leave here with an ILP that's completed. I'm trying to hurry. One thing that we have, have been working on for a little bit, and we need to get finalized, is AP 5G. We are required to have a school-wide writing plan. We have, we have a plan now, and, and basically that plan calls for the process to put together a real plan. And we are, are working on getting our group together to get that school-wide writing plan implemented and completed. You know, again, it's coming, you know, the meeting's been scheduled, so, you know, hopefully by our after-Christmas report, you know, we'll, we can say that that's fully The second component, you know, that was the academic performance. The second component is learning environment. That's everything, of course, around other than academics. You know, I'll go through this quickly. We, you know, are required, you know, our teachers teach, you know, a standard behavior curriculum, a step, steps to respect and second steps. You know, we've implemented that, we can, you know, we have lesson plans, where those things are taught. We also have identified behaviors, we have an RTI system in, 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 in reading and math, and also in behavior. So we have committees who meet to develop criterias to place students and to receive assistance in their behavior as well, if needed. I mentioned the family nights earlier, LE 3A mentions that we have a goal of every teacher participating in a family education night a year. You know, we had several, you begin with the first one last night, so that's well on its way to being completed. Our parents ask for a new parent night, we had, actually had two of those this summer. Any parent who requests receives a parent mentor, an experienced parent to help them through the, you know, the day-to-day things, you have questions they may not want to ask me or a teacher, we have some parents who will assist them in that. Our, our big goal, and, you know, we wanted to make sure we communicated all these different nights as quickly as possible, we were asked to complete, by our parents, a calendar, a yearly calendar. It was an awfully big deal to do a yearly calendar, so we made the deal with them, they would give them a, that we would give them a first semester and a second semester. So the first semester calendar's out, it's been sent home and also emailed to parents. Then the last two things, quickly, is the same thing every year, our school wellness. It's another component of our C-SIP. It says that our, you know, we're going to have 15 minutes of physical activity a day above and beyond our physical education and also recess times. You know, we do that, we have that log through our, our lesson plans and also through observations. And also, we have completed, at the beginning of each school year, we ask every teacher to complete a log, asking any student to tell them what type of physical activity they're involved in. You know, we know football, we know basketball, sure, all those things, but also dance and, and, you know, things we may not know about karate, all the different things that they participate in, we have logs of that as well. And I think there'll be a report coming up soon to you guys about that. I'm sorry it tucks along, but that's basically where we're at right now, and, you know, hopefully after Christmas, I can tell you that we've completed almost all these things, if not all of them.
Just as a... Just as a follow-up, I think the vast majority of the audience here probably understands the majority of the acronyms that you were using there. However, just for the sake of our stakeholders viewing this meeting, when Mr. Jones referring to RTI or response to intervention, we're simply referring to making sure if any students are having issues within those three areas that he mentioned of math, reading, and behavior, that before a student falls through the crack, that we make sure that we get them back up to speed. For example, most elementary schools will try to make sure that students are on grade level reading by third grade. Here, we want to make sure that hopefully they're on grade level by the end of first grade. Math, we have a teacher solely devoted to response to intervention or helping or assisting those students with, with math components. And I would put Ms. Cunningham up against anyone in assisting students with their math needs.
Absolutely.
And of course, Ms. Keen working with students with behavior. But this, this RTI is to make sure that if we've got any students, and typically, it's students that will transfer into our district and that may be behind, and, and we're trying to get them caught back up. PLCs, he referred to several, several times, or professional learning communities. Just imagine when teachers used to have common planning. It's, it's really focused common planning where the staff is focused on data and making sure that we attack with solutions that are data-based or data-driven, and trying to assist students. And of course, he mentioned CSEP. That's our comprehensive school improvement plan. And that's basically the, the school's strategic plan, or what they're doing to, to make sure that we're addressing students' needs. The other thing is, we're one of the few districts that you, that you mentioned that purchased the, the new math textbooks. And of course, that is just kind of common sense. The math standards just rolled out this past year, so we wanted to make sure that we had those included. Want to thank Mr. Belcher for his research there, and Ms. Tackett for working with the textbooks, and the, the textbook committees there, making sure that we spiral up from kindergarten all the way through the 12th grade, where we're offering these AP classes or dual-credit classes within the math program. And it's amazing that teachers are already getting together and starting to look at language arts adoption for next year, so that students will have new textbooks for that. But just, that's a few things we wanted to point out to you when we're using those acronyms to make sure that you understand what we're doing for your son or daughter here, or grandchild within Pikeville Independent Schools.
And also, I want to apologize. Mr. Rowe and I are so used to being on TV, we're stars. Sometimes we forget those little things. We apologize.
That's a matter.
All right. We'll move on down to the instruction supervisor report now. Mr. Belcher, Ms. Tackett?
I have just one thing to share with you. Mr. Jones mentioned in his report that we have just finished our benchmark screening of both reading and math. We've screened every single student in the building on, on reading and math assessments, with the exception of our FMD students. So what you have, this is a continuation of what we began last year. So this is the beginning summary, the white sheet is for the reading. If you recall from last year, the red numbers are the students' scores from last spring, and that way, we can look and see if we lost ground during the summer. So you have the percent benchmarked. The very first column is the percent benchmarked for this same assessment last fall. And then we have the percent that are on watch at an intervention level, and then urgent intervention level, the total tested. And if you look down, one of the things we're most proud of is this year, for the first time, every single student was tested. We didn't miss anyone. And the green sheet is the same information for math. You don't have anything there for kindergarten and first grade. They take a different assessment. The Star Math is not appropriate for kindergarten and first grade. They take an assessment called Ames Web. It's administered individually to each child by Ms. Cunningham. She has just completed that testing either yesterday or today, and will have that data into the report form for us, and, and I'll have that for you at the next meeting.
And something that's much more exciting than just saying, even though that's really exciting, saying that every child was tested, you also reviewed the information. That information's going to parents, too.
Yes. Parents got a diagnostic report for both subjects with, this is where your child is, and these are suggestions for things that you can do to help at home. It went with a parent letter explaining the report, and an invitation to contact the teacher if they wanted a conference or a telephone meeting or an email. This information was shared with the school council today, so they've seen it. This school also has a data team that will meet to review this and make suggestions as to how to improve the program. And our goal for each subject is to have eighty percent benchmarked. So you can see that some areas were close, some were ahead. Mr. Jones and I have identified one area that we have a little concern, and he's going to be speaking with that person himself to, to address, are there some barriers or things that we need to can do to support this one person? Any questions?
It's, it's exciting, and it's phenomenal that now this is being broken down to each student, each individual student. And I, I don't know how many days that you were over here working with the assessment and the testing consecutively.
I, I always come over and assist with kindergarten and first grade, because this early in the year, they need a lot of extra help. We also had about four or five parent volunteers who came in, and I trained them, and they assisted with kindergarten. We had an adult for every two children with kindergarten, and we took them half the class at a time. So I was over here every day for about a week and a half to get that accomplished.
That's phenomenal. We want to thank those parent volunteers again, too.
They, they did a great job.
Mr. Belcher? Just a couple items real quick. Kind of to piggyback off of Ms. Tackett on the, the assessment of students, it's now, like she mentioned, at the kindergarten level, but like I mentioned in later, our earlier meetings, the Brigance kindergarten screener, our kindergarten teachers just did a flat-out phenomenal job. They were finished in probably half the time that we allowed them to, to have, and so just kudos to them for that. But the idea of the Brigance kindergarten screener is also taking data and being able to judge and try to educate parents on prior setting. In other words, now we're even talking about how to prepare students to get ready to go to school, not only while they're, they're there. So that was something that's nice, that's come along. Assessment will soon be in the spotlight. I'll say the first event happened, Mr. Rowe mentioned today, for us, this beginning school year with the Explore Plan and Kaplan Test that we use. Explore Plan in the eighth and 10th grade, as he mentioned, are for accountability. A lot was planned tonight, so I'll hold off on some accountability review items and things like that. But, but very soon, we were just notified last week that results would be a little later than we had anticipated. They were supposed to come out embargoed in late September, but now we're told that will be early October, so it may be late October, early November, when we're seeing actual public release of that. Just maybe plowing the ground from what we might see, we might not either. Dr. Holliday has kind of scared us a bit in terms of sending out emails to all teachers that, that the results might be lower than what it has been in the past, so I'll just go ahead and say those things. This is a new assessment start, so to speak, with K-Prep. And so as soon as those things are available to us, I'll, I'll get on stage and try to hope of letting you understand those.
What's so difficult right now with the assessment, last year, this year, next year, all three years, different pieces are being added to this or, or augmented. It's difficult enough for the, the trained professionals or the educators to keep up with the changes, let alone those community stakeholders. And we realize that. We'll try to get you as much education as possible out there concerning the new assessments. Right now, we have about forty percent of the results or information back with the graduation rate and the college and career readiness at the high school. And of course, they're still setting those cut scores for the K-Prep results at the elementary level. And now, I realize it's dropping all the way down to kindergarten with those Brigance assessments. So be getting that information out soon to parents, too.
Thank you, Mr. Green, thank you. Move down now to the action consent items as presented here, A through H. If there's any items that need to be removed for further discussion, be so said here tonight. If not, I'll take a motion to approve the action consent items.
Make a motion.
Mr. Tackett makes a motion. Have a second.
Second.
Mr. Carter makes a second. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? So moved on to action consent items. We now move down to the action discussion items. Item A, lease agreement, property adjacent to transportation department.
Mr. Thompson.
Mr. Thompson?
The board has been given the opportunity to lease the property that is adjacent to our current bus garage at no cost to the district. And we have given you a lease agreement that I have drawn up with that landowner. We're meeting in the morning to discuss it. He's essentially agreed to the terms. We just have to work on some language. What, what we need the board to do if they're in agreement is to pass a motion that allows Mr. Green to sign a lease agreement. It may not be, excuse me, the exact one you've got in front of you, but would allow him to sign this agreement, essentially leasing that. It's the back part of the lot that's right next to the bus garage. It would allow us to, you know, park some buses there and turn the buses around, but allow us to go ahead and sign the lease agreement once it's finalized with essentially the same terms that you've got in front of you.
And prior to me signing off on that, I'd make sure that each of the board members had a copy of the final draft, and that everyone was in agreement with. Pardon me signing that document.
So we need a motion to have Mr. Green act as our say-so in this agreement with the lease property agreement, that he can sign it for us.
Essentially, the motion needs to say that we approved the lease, but it might not be as written, is what I'm saying. So it would be a motion to approve Mr. Green to sign the lease as written.
Okay.
When we get, get it finalized.
Okay. So we need a motion to approve Mr. Green to sign the lease as written when it's finalized, allowing us to have this agreement. Mr. Beeter will make that motion. Second?
Second.
Mr. Tackett? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? So move. Then item B, 2012-13 working budget.
As, as that's pulled up on the screen there, it's a really lengthy document, but I can go through some of the major concerns. This is the first year, been, this is my eleventh year within the school district, first year that we've not had raises for students. And I'm sure that no one, or for the staff, there's no raises this year for the first time in eleven years. And our district's extremely fortunate in that capacity or fact. I'm sure that everyone keeps hearing the buzz about budgets and the budgetary woes of both the national and the state government, and what's going on within school districts right now. There's about $318,000 in cuts, not about, that's the correct number, $318,000 in cuts concerning the working budget. The budget does not include any new school buses, which is a change for us, because usually we're purchasing a new school bus per year. And of course, we have in our fleet twenty-one school buses. Some costs have really increased, such as diesel fuel. If any of you drive and have noticed the prices at the gas stations, you'll, you'll notice the difference. For example, in the past, this past year, the amount for diesel fuel was over $60,000 for our district. Previously, it had been in the thirties, thirty-some thousand dollars. We've also had additional costs that are, are substantial, that, for example, insurance, our student insurance has really increased, although our number of accidents on our student policies have decreased. And you might ask, well, why is that? So the economy is, I don't have to share with anyone, is extremely difficult right now and what's happened. Our insurance carriers have found out that the more folks that you have that are not covered by their employer's health insurance, our student activity insurance becomes the primary coverage. Therefore, they're out more money, which causes those rates to increase. So that's in addition. Even without a percentage raise, we had about fifteen certified staff have ranked changes. And of course, within our classified staff, years of experience add in those amounts. The other thing that's going up that most people are unaware of, it's twenty-four point, it's about twenty-four point eight percent concerning classified benefits or in addition to the salary. And those costs are increasing, along with the matching cost for our certified staff members. So just to give you an idea, with health insurance alone, the state contribution there, the employer contribution, along with the individuals for policy, it's around, I think, $1,692 per month, just to give you an idea on the health insurance. All those costs going into effect. We've really cut maintenance, cut it to bare bones. We've cut busing. We have cut every area, for example, tonight, within the Panther News Hour, want to thank Mr. Johnson and those students, and Ms. Scott and the staff. This year, saved $41,000 in energy. Well, of course, that's a teacher for our school district, and certainly want to thank them. We have fewer staff within special education this year. And, long story short, we're trying to, as most other districts, do more with less, trying to make certain that we don't affect services within the classroom. And so far, we've done a really good job of insulating that. However, for the extras, for, for the first times, people are actually hearing the word no, and have to show them why, if it's, if it's some extras. However, we want to make sure that we insulate the students as much as possible in doing so. Again, everybody keeps hoping that the economy will turn and revenues will go up or increase. And of course, that's one of the other items tonight about tax rates that we'll be discussing. But we have the same SEEK forecast now as we did for the tentative budget. It's not been updated. We have gained students, which should be a plus for next year. And again, that lags, and we're one of the few districts in eastern Kentucky to be gaining students as far as this year overall. So we're thankful for that fact. But do need a, a motion to approve the working budget. And again, we're just like other school districts in trying to do more with less at this point.
Okay, entertain a motion to approve the 2012-2013 working budget as presented.
So move.
Mr. Carter, have a second?
Second.
Mr. Beeter, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved on to 2012-13 working budget. Now down to the 2012 property tax rates.
Okay. You'll, if Ms. Tackett would, if you, that's the exact page I need, thank you, I pulled up there. Again, I call this the best-kept secret in our community. And you'll notice on the screen, Pikeville Independent Schools' prior year tax rates. So much is often made of tax rates, and of course, as I mentioned earlier, within this economy, taxes are a huge concern of everyone. Well, you'll notice, for the past two years, the tax rate has stayed the same in 2011 and 2010, at sixty-eight point nine cents. Well, you'll notice that over the past six years, it's continued to be within the sixty-eight cents per $100 assessed value range. However, this is a notable secret within our community, I believe, and that's for the years 2003, 2004, 2005, our tax rate was actually higher than it has been for the past six years. Now, I don't know about you, but I am unaware of any items that I can think of off the top of my head that are less expensive today than they were seven to nine years ago. And our city school tax rates are actually less. So the compensating rate this year is sixty-eight point one cents with exonerations or an additional eight tenths of a cent, comes to a total of sixty-eight point nine cents on, for every, per $100 of assessed value. Comes to a total of 68.9 cents on, for every, per $100 of assessed value or property value. So, the exact amount of the compensating rate is the exact amount of our tax rate for property owners for the past two years. So, recommend to the board tonight to approve the compensating tax rate at 69, 68.9 cents on the hundred or per $100 of assessed value. That'll be the third consecutive year that it's maintained this rate. And then also to approve a motor vehicle tax rate of 79.3 cents. And just to give you an idea, that tax rate concerning motor vehicle has been the same since 1984. So, that motor vehicle tax rate has not increased since 1984. So, the other thing that I would share to, for our stakeholders is, as Mr. Rowe mentioned earlier, we do rank number four within the state concerning ACT. It's past year, number three within the plan scores. I would challenge anyone to look at the tax rates of the top 10 performing school districts across the state. When you look at ranking bang for buck or bang for the buck concerning our tax rate regarding the data produced with the assessments, I would put our district up against any of those. So, we're thankful for both the schools and what they do with those monies. And we try to be good stewards of the taxpayers' money concerning making sure that we get the most bang for the buck for every taxpayer dollar. And want to commend both staff for doing so. But we do need a motion to approve that tonight.
Okay. I need a motion as approved the 2012 property tax rate of 68.9 cents with 5.6 cents restricted for categorical priorities listed in the improved facilities plan for participation in the FFCC and to approve the 2013 motor vehicle and watercraft tax rate of 79.3 cents.
It's a mouthful. Thank you.
Like that motion.
Have a motion to approve that raise. Mr. Tackett, have a second.
Second.
Mr. Bitter, a second. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? So, moved on the tax rate for 2012. Other business for the board, Mr. Green?
I don't have any other business. And, and the last comment that I'd make on the tax rates, again, the, the skies may be much more gloomy next year and of course, we'll have to look at it then. But I want to thank the board members who are trying to do everything that they can to make sure that we keep the tax rates within reasonable amounts and not add additional burdens onto the stakeholders within our community or community members. Realize it's a tough economy out there and I just appreciate your all's input on this. Again, we're going to try to do more with less and continue to have those high expectations for students and staff. And we're just thankful for those. But I don't have anything under other business for tonight.
Okay. We'll move down to informational review items, the personnel report.
You'll notice on the personnel report tonight, we have one new hire concerning part-time custodial substitutes, four substitutes and one retirement. And then under miscellaneous, if you pop that up, under miscellaneous, I don't believe we have anything there under miscellaneous. And we don't need a closed session.
No closed session needed. Any other news to be brought for the board, anything for the board before we return?
No. Just, again, want to thank Pikeville Elementary School tonight.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
For their hospitality and for the staff. And again, tonight, we're here recognizing the office support staff, maintenance and custodial, along with food service staff here tonight and for what they do for our students. Can't, can't thank those folks enough.
All right. Nothing to be brought for the board. I'll have a motion entertained to adjourn.
So moved.
Mr. Bitter, make a motion, a second.
Second.
Mr. Tackett, a second. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? So moved on to adjourn.
Thank you.